All right, Jerry, it's nine o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order. Good morning, everyone. If you don't have a copy of the agenda, you can get one in the back bookshelf. Does everyone get a chance to see, actually, Jerry, it looks like Sonny and Lori's not here. Are they expected to be here? I think they are, so they might come in a little late.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Rich.
I believe Sonny wrote an email last week indicating he didn't think he was gonna be here.
That is correct. Sonny's not gonna be here, so I annotate, Sonny is absent and Lori may be here shortly. Everyone get a chance to go through the package and go through the minutes and see if there's any errors or corrections? If not, I entertain a motion for approval.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of today's agenda. Is there any additions or takeaways from it? If not, I entertain a motion to approve. Yes.
Let's ask PJ about item twenty-one, because when we first got our packet, the agenda item didn't match the item in the packet.
Which item? I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Item twenty-one.
Pardon me, I was just wondering about item twenty-one. When we first got our packets, they didn't...
Yep, when we go through, we're pulling that one to continuation till the eleventh.
On the consent, and they're gonna correct it.
Okay.
All right, any other concerns with today's agenda? If not, I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Today's consent agenda. PJ, take it away.
All right, nineteen items on the consent agenda. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings in a planning commission are recommendations to the Pendleton County Board of Commissioners to make the final decisions. Item three, conditional use permit review oh-nine-ten for Tom Bodensteiner. Carl Bodensteiner is agent to review a sawmill in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit oh-nine-ten with fifteen conditions. Item four, conditional use permit review sixteen-ten for Don Richard to review a single wide mobile home to be used as a single-family residence in the general agriculture district. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit sixteen-ten with the applicant's concurrence. Item five, conditional use permit review sixteen-twenty-seven for Jean and Carl Vanderwerth to review vacation home rental in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit sixteen-twenty-seven with fourteen conditions. Item six, conditional use permit review seventeen-sixteen for Schoolhouse LLC Larry Tuber's owner to review a vacation home rental in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit seventeen-sixteen with sixteen conditions. Item seven, conditional use permit review seventeen-seventeen for SC Meridian LLC Larry Tuber to review a vacation home rental in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit seventeen-seventeen with sixteen conditions. Item eight, conditional use permit review seventeen-eighteen for SC Meridian LLC Larry Tuber to review a vacation home rental in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit seventeen-eighteen with fifteen conditions. Item nine, conditional use permit review seventeen-nineteen for SC Meridian LLC Larry Tuber to review a vacation home rental in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit seventeen-nineteen with fifteen conditions. Item ten, conditional use permit review seventeen-twenty for Melissa Masters to review a mobile home, I'm sorry, a mobile large animal home veterinarian practice in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit seventeen-twenty with ten conditions. Item eleven, construction permit review sixteen-oh-four, Black Hills Power Incorporated to review the construction of a two-three-zero KV transmission line to connect the Tekla substation in Campbell County, Wyoming, to the Osage substation in Western County, Wyoming, and the Lang substation located in Pendleton County near Rapid City, South Dakota. Staff recommends to end construction permit sixteen-oh-four with the applicant's concurrence. Item twelve, construction permit review sixteen-oh-five for Pendleton County Highway Department to review the reconstruction of a slide area along Kelly Hill Drive. Staff recommends to end construction permit sixteen-oh-five with the applicant's concurrence. Item thirteen, construction permit review seventeen-oh-five for Anthony and Michelle Griffith to review bringing in fill to an area to level gravel and allow for the reclamation of the remaining area. Staff recommends approval of the extension of construction permit seventeen-oh-five with seven conditions. Item fourteen, construction permit review seventeen-oh-seven for Miller Construction to review the construction of an eight-hundred-ton, sorry, eight-hundred-foot-long driveway that will provide access to the subject property. Staff recommends to end construction permit seventeen-oh-seven with the applicant's concurrence. Item fifteen, construction permit eighteen-oh-six for Laredo Holdings LLC Ryan Kasky to construct a road and turnaround and utilities for a new phase of land development in Sunset Range subdivision. Staff recommends approval of construction permit eighteen-oh-six with thirteen conditions. Item sixteen, conditional use permit eighteen-oh-eight for Strohmer Properties LLC, Brooke Strohmer, to allow illuminated on-premise sign within fifteen hundred feet of a residential zoning district and dwelling in a general commercial district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit eighteen-oh-eight with eight conditions. Item seventeen, construction, excuse me, conditional use permit eighteen-oh-nine for Scott and Christine Gresen to allow recreational vehicle to be used as a temporary living quarters in a subject property while building a single-family residence on an additional lot in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit eighteen-oh-nine with twelve conditions. Item eighteen, conditional use permit eighteen-ten for Ray and Erin Atkins to allow an accessory unit which will be a garage prior to a principal structure in the subject property of the limited agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit eighteen-ten with eleven conditions. Item nineteen, conditional use permit eighteen-twelve for Idolized Mountain Lodge Marshall Macailey to allow a vacation home rental on the subject property in the suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit eighteen-twelve with fifteen conditions. All right, we're in the home stretch here. Item twenty, subdivision regulation variance eighteen-oh-four for Douglas Norberg, Buckhorn Surveying as the agent to waive planning requirements in order to create track one and track two of Somquist subdivision. Staff recommends approval of subdivision regulation variance eighteen-oh-four. Item twenty-one, conditional use permit eighteen-eleven for Lori Noor. And the definition in here is wrong, and it states that to allow an accessory structure prior to a principal structure. And staff recommends approval of conditional use permit eighteen-eleven with ten conditions.
Okay, take a deep breath.
Sorry?
Take a deep breath and get some water.
You got it.
All right, is there any items that staff would like to pull?
Staff would like to pull ten, sixteen, nineteen, and twenty-one, just for some corrections and continuations.
Absolutely. Any members of the membership like to pull any items? And then, any audience members, all the items that were just...
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I don't necessarily want to pull it, but item eleven, the agenda numbers on the pages need to be for minutes purposes. It says item ten, so it's the item eleven.
On the top of it, okay.
Well, gotcha. Several edits in there.
Yeah, so that should be pulled for correction?
How many of them do we need to pull for correction, then, if you recognize that?
Yeah, might as well.
All right, so which ones are those?
Well, thirteen.
Thirteen? Have to get that staff. Fourteen? Oh, yeah, thirteen, I got all of them.
Are you working off the current agenda?
Yeah, I think it's just eleven, twelve, thirteen.
Eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. My thirteen shows thirteen.
Anthony Griffith.
Oh, wait a minute, do you have the original agenda on your packet? Or did you get the new agenda that was...
Well, I'm just looking, I'm looking at the titles here.
Oh, and, oh, it's in the title?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the titles. You know, like, for example, on thirteen, then you turn to page two, it says item twelve. You're not, you don't want to...
Oh, it didn't carry over?
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think it needs to be pulled for that.
Yeah.
Okay, we don't need to pull for that?
They don't need to be pulled for that.
Okay. All right, so do, so right now, currently, I'm looking at ten, sixteen, nineteen, twenty-one, right?
And nineteen, sixteen, twenty-one.
Okay, any others from the membership? All right, audience, all those items that PJ just read through, items three through twenty-one, are there any items that y'all would like removed so that they're not voted on in one fail vote? So that we can, if you want to discuss them, if you have any issues with those items, you want to have those pulled now so we can discuss those at a later time. All right, seeing none.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, come on, come on up, sir. Come on up, state your name and tell us what item you'd like to have pulled. Thank you, Rich, I didn't see.
Yeah, my name is John Jones, and I live out on Chertland Lake Road, and I'd like to, I don't know, understand what you mean by pull.
What item are you here for?
Um, excuse me?
What item number are you here for? Twenty-one. We're gonna actually remove it off the consent agenda so that you'll have an opportunity to come up here and talk about that item if you have a concern with it.
Okay, so it's coming up?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be coming off the consent agenda. All right, any other audience members like to pull any item from the consent agenda? If not, I see that our consent items are gonna be items three through nine, eleven through fifteen, seventeen, and eighteen, and twenty. Did I get all those right, Jerry? So that would be our consent agenda, three through nine, eleven through fifteen, seventeen, eighteen, and twenty.
I'll move.
Second.
By Bill, second by Rich. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That takes us to item number ten.
Item ten is conditional use permit review seventeen-twenty for Melissa Masters to review a mobile, large animal home veterinarian practice. There was a citizen concern that came in, the board has copies of those. The applicant's unable to be at the meeting today and is requesting a continuation to June twenty-fifth.
Okay. Are there any audience members that would like to speak on behalf of this item? Just in case, I want to make sure before we consider... It does not look like anybody wants to speak on this item, so my recommendation is to continue it so she can be here, is that...
Correct.
For the next meeting, which is gonna be...
Well, not the next one, it'll be the twenty-fifth, not the eleventh.
Okay, the twenty-fifth, that's right. Need to make sure we continue it to the twenty-fifth. So that's the recommendation, to continue this item to the twenty-fifth.
I'll move to continue it to the twenty-fifth, second.
Motion in second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number sixteen?
Item sixteen is conditional use permit eighteen-oh-eight for Strohmer Properties. The reason staff's pulling it is from an item identified by Commissioner Johnson on page four of six in section VE one. It references the southeast corner, it should be the southwest corner. Other than that correction, staff would still recommend approval of CU eighteen-oh-eight with eight conditions.
So we make the edit change, and then... Recommendation to approve the conditional use permit CU eighteen-dash-zero-eight with the following eight conditions. Is there a motion for that?
I'll move to approve conditional use permit eighteen-eight with eight conditions.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That takes us to item nineteen.
Yep. Item nineteen is conditional use permit eighteen-twelve for Idolized Mountain Lodge. The reason it was pulled is just an update to the packet which you received this morning when Idolize sent us some of the policies. They sent us the one for Pactola Estates. We put it in because that's what they sent us. They did send us the revised version, the Omega, which shows different nighttime occupancies and daytime occupancy. So that's why it's important to have it in there. And with that, staff would still recommend approval of conditional use permit eighteen-twelve with fifteen conditions.
All right, now, am I correct, these emails?
There's also two emails, one from the concerned residents in Idolize, and then one from, I believe, the head of the HOA.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for staff on this one?
I do.
Go ahead.
What are our requirements to put one of these in a suburban residential?
Has to have at least one acre.
And so, obviously, this has more than one acre.
It does now because it was just recently consolidated. They tried for a variance for lot size, and it was denied. So they went through the plating process to consolidate two lots together in Idolize.
That's how we finally decided, is anything over an acre, it was okay in suburban.
Yeah, and that's why they did it. It's probably the third time it's happened in Idolize.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for staff? Any audience members like to speak on behalf of this item?
Seeing none, the current recommendation is to approve conditional use permit eighteen-twelve with the following fifteen conditions.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Rich?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Sorry.
Oh, it's fine.
Need someone to log in. Can you excuse me for one second?
Sure, go ahead.
Sorry.
Nope, that's fine.
Computer timed out.
Ah, then we have item number twenty, twenty-one.
Sure. Item twenty-one is conditional use permit eighteen-eleven for Lori Noor. The reason we're pulling it is the agenda description and the legal is wrong. Talked to the applicant this morning, and we're gonna continue it to the June eleventh Planning Commission meeting to correct that.
Item twenty-one is gonna be continued, all right. Any questions for staff on this one?
I believe there was someone here who wanted it.
That's what I was getting to. Any old questions for staff? Any members of the audience like to speak on this behalf, on this item? Come on forward, sir, and state your name, please.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John Jones, and I am kinda confused here. On the conditional permit twenty-one, I've received a letter for a multifamily dwelling, and twenty-one is saying that it's a garage structure prior to a home. What is it? Are they building a home, or are they building a garage?
Okay. Thank you very much, PJ.
Yep, and that's why we're continuing it, because the addend is wrong, the staff report is correct.
Okay, can you explain what the agenda is supposed to be?
Yep, what the staff, you don't get a copy of the staff report. They're building a multifamily dwelling, they're basically building one house with the downstairs intended for herself, and upstairs for, I believe, a mother-in-law.
Okay, so it's gonna be basically the same structure that was there, that was torn down? It's not gonna be a duplex or anything like that?
Well, we haven't seen the plans for it yet, but it's gonna be one building, first floor and second floor, not side by side.
One vantage, one building, same with on top of the other.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
It was very vague, and I just had some questions, and you say this meeting is until when?
June eleventh.
June eleventh.
If they approve that.
June eleventh, okay. Well, gentlemen and ladies, that answers my question, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Rich.
There are some preliminary sketches from this Heckle Construction Incorporated within the agenda, within the packet that we got sent. So if the gentleman wanted to be, go online, he could review what they have in mind. Or I can just rip these out of my packet and give it to him, too. Okay, why don't you come here, and I'll rip these out, and you can take a look.
And the gentleman's concern is basically all the phone calls that we've gotten on this one, and then once they see the plans, this is the second round of plans, it's a more updated version.
Are they more concerned that it might could be a duplex rather than a...
Really concerned about multiple buildings.
Okay.
Once they realize it's one building, they're like, okay, it's not a big deal.
Okay.
Yep.
Down the road?
Oh, yeah. It's right here.
For sure. Okay. Yep, kind of concerned, sure. No, but those are the rough plans, and that's also located online as well, if you need to look at it further.
And we're gonna continue this to the June eleventh as well?
That's a recommendation, yes, please.
All right, thank you, Rich, for handing that over to him. All right, current recommendation is to continue this item until June eleventh. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll move approval for the continuation, second.
Motion in second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That takes us to item twenty-two.
Item twenty-two is conditional use permit eighteen-oh-seven to allow for five illuminated on-premise signs within fifteen hundred feet of a residential zoning district or dwelling in a highway service district. This was heard before the Planning Commission at the last meeting. There was some discussion of limiting the number of illuminated signs on the property. It was ultimately continued to today to allow the applicant to be present, and the applicant is in the audience today.
All right, any questions for staff? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that'd like to come forward and speak on this item? That would be you, come on forward. Well, there might be some questions for you, sir, if you can go ahead and state your name, and if you have anything...
My name's Tim McTavish.
All right. Tim, would you like to give us some information on this item, on your building there?
As I think I understand it, we got the picture up there right now of the front of the building, and we're good to go on A, B, C, right? There was some question on the north and south ends of the building?
None of the illuminated, sorry.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So, not good enough. There was discussion on D and E, I believe, but...
Well, and I think we had a question about B and C, about whether that's gonna be just something that, like, you turn on, you know, saying we're open or something.
No, there's, the B side is my illuminated steel logo sign. It's a four-foot-by-six-foot internally illuminated, like... And the C one is the same thing, only for my Cub Cadet stuff.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Advertising a certain brand or something?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I don't think we have a picture of it. The other ones, this side of the building right here is where, I don't remember which letter is goes.
That's the D, I believe.
The D and E.
D and E, whichever, okay. So that, oh, and back on the front of the building, the Black Hills Power Equipment Logo sign is up in, and that's lit from the softens. The south side of the building, the lights are up there. There's just no sign under them.
And if I remember correctly, they're on currently, right? Are those lights on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So this is what I see as a little bit weird, is that I see a permit for a non-illuminated sign on this existing condition. So I can have a sign there but no lights, and I can have lights there but no sign. Because the lights are there. The lights are shining on the side of the building as we, you know, when it gets dark. It just doesn't have a sign under it.
Are those lights on twenty-four-seven, or during hours of darkness?
They're on a twilight sensor.
Twilight sensor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, you can see them right up there on that picture, up at the top of the building.
I actually drove by on the seventeenth, so I saw what they looked like. That's why I wanted to verify. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, if I remember correctly, the concern was the illumination of the signs and the adjacent landowners that own property. But, so you're saying that you have a building, and these are lights that come on to illuminate the garage opening, or what?
No, those three lights on that picture, those three lights are for the sign.
Okay, and have they, have you had any, have you had any of your neighbors have any concerns about any of the lights in the building?
We actually did when they first constructed the building, to the right of the... Would you quit moving that? Go back to the building. Because you can see, let me point out, to the right of the overhead door is a security light, and over that overhead door is also a security light. When the electricians first put those up, they put a light that you could see from space on both of those locations.
Okay.
And the guy across the highway, up on the hill, commented, and he was right. I drove by there one night, and I could literally see the shadow of my pickup on the mountainside across the highway. They since came back and changed those. They are now hooded LEDs that point down where they were supposed to... I mean, that was my original request to the electricians when they put this up.
Okay.
Was, I told them point-blank, I am not on East North Street, I do not need to light up the whole valley. I want, you know, I can light my property with a candle. I need light on the building, but I don't need to get carried away.
Okay.
So they did come back and change that. So as it stands right now, it's fairly subdued. You know, I've got the security lights on both sides of that shop building, and then those three goose neck lights up above are actually shining back on the building, and that's, in theory, where that sign's gonna go.
And I will say, I think when we were reading this originally, we didn't realize that that was how they were gonna be done. When we think illuminated signs, we think the sign itself has got lights. However, blame him. Blame PJ, is what he just said. But I think towards the end of our discussion, when we were talking about this, that's when we realized it was gonna be from those lights shining back, so...
Yeah, the only two that are actually lit internally are the two that go under the awning on the front of the building. The two four-by-six are the only two that are actually lit internally. The others have, like I said, soft lights and those three goose necks.
So PJ, do you still call that an illuminated sign, even though he's already got the lights on his building, and he puts a sign underneath it? Is that still technically an illuminated sign?
Or an incident is, yes.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure that we're using the right terminology, is really kinda what I was getting at.
Yeah.
Yeah, you guys should change that, because that's, it really is. Like, like I just said, I have a permit to put a sign on the building but no lights, and I can have lights on the building but no sign, but you put the two together, and here we are.
Fair enough. Any further questions for Tim?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Lori.
And just so I understand, even though you don't have signs in these areas where you have lights, the lights are on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and they've been on since you built the building?
Since they turned the switch.
Okay.
And how long have you been there?
End of February.
Okay. Kathy, go ahead.
You know, I, I was one that had some concerns at our last meeting, and I think I moved to continue it because of, you know, my view is that we have, these ordinances, you know, predate me, of course, but the ordinance of not having an illuminated sign within fifteen hundred feet of residence, you know, is there for a reason. And so I think, we need, at least I feel, I need to be very careful in giving waivers to those ordinances, because, you know, they're there for a reason. And I, and I know I looked at Rapid Map, and the neighbors are, you know, like, the at seven-hundred-and-fifty feet, the one on top that wrote the letter to us, and so on. And so they're really certainly well within the fifteen-hundred feet. So, you know, at that time, too, I wasn't really aware about, you know, exactly how you were going to light these and so on.
Right.
And, and I do appreciate the fact that you changed our security light.
Oh, my God, he had every right to be worried, you know, very concerned about that one.
Yeah, for sure, but, you know, is there, is it possible, it's kind of a middle ground to the ordinance, that these are on a timer so that after, like, in the winter, you know, after nine o'clock at night or sometime, they go off? I mean, is it important that they're lit all night long?
Not really. No, I mean, they could certainly be, you know, go off at midnight, or go off after the bar closes next door, or whatever. You know, the, all of the outside illumination on the building is all on one circuit, and it all comes on, you know, with the twilight sensor, including those, those upper sign lights. You know, the soft lights, the awning lights, all of that outside illumination all comes on at the same time.
But it could be, I mean, it's not impossible to make a switch.
It would not be impossible to turn those off, but I don't know that that's the issue. I mean, the, the, the security lighting puts way more light around that shop property than these signs.
Yes, uh-huh.
These signs are, you know, like what you got around here that are shining on the signs on the side of the building.
Right.
So...
Yeah.
Not a huge issue. It shouldn't be a huge issue.
Uh-huh. No, I understand.
They turn the gas station off at night.
Right, I know, but the gas station's been there a very, very long time, and so the neighbors, and that's exactly fifteen hundred feet. Yeah, well, they bought their houses knowing that the gas station was there.
Right.
So that's, that's the deal there.
They also bought their houses knowing that this is a commercial development area across the road.
Right, but they also knew that there was an ordinance restricting illuminated signs for fifteen hundred feet. So, you know, that's the predicament we're in here, and I do have some sympathy for the neighbors, whether they've actually written a letter or not, because this is a decision that's gonna affect their property for a long time. And so I do have some, you know, some sympathy and I kind of some understanding of their position. Thank you for the information.
Sure.
Any further questions for Tim?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Rich.
Is the lighting for sign D, as in dog, the same as E, as in Edward?
Oh, I don't know which side of that is the north side of the building. Oh, um, I don't know which side of that is the north side of the building and which side is the south side of the building.
They're the east and west sides of the shop.
Okay.
So if you go to the picture of the shop.
Let's go back to.
We have a picture of what I consider to be E and I, I don't know if I've seen the D side. And I was just wondering, is, is D have those same goosenecks?
End of the shop building does not have lights on it, nor will it probably have a sign in the near future. It was suggested to me that we should ask for that, so we do it all at the same time in the event that sometime down the road, if I decided I wanted to put a sign on that side of the shop building, that we'd already have this covered.
But for right now, you, you don't have a sign or?
Less. I mean, no, that side is the side that faces Highway three eighty-five. From the highway, it would be so far away that you would not be able to see that sign anyway.
Do you have lights on side D?
There are no lights on that end of the building, no. No, that, that whole side is dark.
Okay.
So that's on, that's the north side?
So that would be D, is that what we're talking about?
Call it the east side.
Well, it's north, isn't it?
Yeah, I think it's generally north.
The north arrow on the, on here, looking at sign D.
Right, I'd say generally north, uh-huh.
North.
Yeah, generally more. The Highway three eighty-five side.
So that would be D.
Oh, no, because the north arrow is this way. It's east.
Thank you.
You're going to go with the?
Yeah, it would be on the east side.
Sorry, I was looking the other way.
The whole thing kind of sits, keep wamping.
So you're facing your store from the front, looking at your front door.
Okay.
Which, it, it's the one on your right-hand side that is your shop entrance and it has the lights.
Correct.
The one on the left-hand side is the one.
Right.
As you're facing, you're, as you're going to walk in your front door.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, the one on the left side doesn't exist and probably will not exist.
Uh-huh.
So that would be what we have annotated on here is D, is that correct?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Any further questions, Rich? Did I clarify?
Clarified. Thank you.
Yeah, scratch that one off. We don't need that sign or the light, either one.
So then all we're discussing in this item, if we take in the recommendation from staff is that we had, that recommends approval of C U eighteen dash zero seven with the following six conditions. Knowing that we're only talking about spots A, B, C, and E as an echo for purposes of any vote.
Correct.
Okay.
So there's no sign there.
Is that clear for everybody? Any further questions? All right, current, um, thank you very much, Tim. I don't think there may be any more questions for you unless you have anything else for us.
Should I go turn on my lights, Joe?
You can go have a seat.
We'll finish this up. I don't know.
Are there, are there, well, let me just see. I don't think there's anybody else who would like to speak on this item. Is there in the audience? So, I saw one other person, but I think he just left, so. Go ahead, PJ.
Yep, so then staff would change the recommendation to specifically state that staff recommends approval of conditional use permit eighteen oh seven for four signs as discussed with six conditions.
For four signs?
Because the staff report is for five.
Right.
I have one question for Mr. Chair.
Oh, go ahead, Kathy.
PJ, condition number one, where it talks about the type of lighting and to minimize spillage of light outside each sign face and so on. And it's, this is really talking about directing, you know, shielding beams from, to the highway and drivers and so on. But does, do you think that this also captures the, the, uh, concept that they, you know, need to be the, whatever the proper term is, but they, you know, they minimize light pollution. In other words, they minimize disruption to the night skies?
Um.
I mean, with the same.
In the downward angle, that's in the ordinance.
That's in the ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's covered then actually under condition three?
Yeah, that's kind of the catch-all.
The downward angle to minimize the light. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any further questions? So as I understand it, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit eighteen oh seven of the four signs as discussed and the following six conditions.
Correct.
All right. That would be the recommendation.
So moved.
Motion and seconded. Whoever wants to take it, Bill and Rich. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That takes us to item number twenty-three.
Item twenty-three is conditional use permit eighteen oh four for a specialty recreation resort and event area. Um, talked with the staff, uh, stopped with staff, talked with the applicant over the weekend. Um, she agrees with staff's recommendation and would request a continuation till June eleventh.
The recommendation is to continue until June eleventh. Is there a motion for such?
I'll move to continue conditional use permit eighteen four to the June eleventh meeting.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item twenty-four.
Item twenty-four, the Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendation from the May fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen Planning Commission meeting. Plan Unit Development sixteen oh three for Dan and Nancy Evangelista was approved with minor changes to a few conditions of approval. And ordinance amendment eighteen oh four Ernest, Ernest Getty and Tina Malawi's, uh, ordinance amendment was denied.
Okay, any questions?
Yes, go ahead. Can you tell us what was changed on the even?
Uh, Evangelistas, they, um, they're allowing the tent to remain up as temporary till at least August twenty-first. They changed the quiet hours to include all the, all the lots in the P U D. And Roland, if you can help me, I can't remember the other one. There were just three minor changes. Nothing big. I think it was.
And then what's going to happen to the tent after August?
That's what's going to be determined.
So they're?
They're talking about putting solid sides up on three sides and leaving a tent membrane as the roof. Um, so it's going to be up till the twenty-first, at least as temporary.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Item twenty-five, items from the public. I don't see any public unless Michelle wants to say something. She's like, no. Uh, staff items, twenty-six.
Item twenty-six, um, Special Planning Commission meeting for June fourth at nine AM, cover the comprehensive plan. That's going to be next Monday. Uh, plan on being at least three, four hours, maybe even more, depending on how many questions or public that shows up.
Who's not going to be here? I have family in town that are coming in, so I may not be here. That means Rich will be in charge. Are you going to be here? You're going to be here, right?
I think so.
Cause I know Kathy was already out and we knew that I could potentially be out.
Yeah, and they're coming in for their public workshops. That's why they're doing it that day.
If my schedule, yeah, if I can clear out some of my schedule when they're here, I'll, I'll try to be in here, but I can't guarantee I will be for sure. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Rich.
Well, PJ, maybe you can help me out. What, will we just be going through the, the plan, the, the document like chapter by chapter or how do you, how do you see that, the, the agenda for that meeting going down?
I don't think we're ready for that type of in-depth presentation yet. We're not looking for any motions or anything during the meeting, just more of a information only. I'm not extra how they're going to do it. We have eleven chapters right now.
So they're going to give us some more detailed overview?
Kind of worth the direction.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. B.
Uh, B, uh, brought this up, uh, the Planning Commission bylaws, they haven't been updated for a little while. I put a copy, an unsigned copy in the packets. I didn't know if it was something that this Planning Commission wanted to recommend for the Planning Commission sitting in July to possibly look at.
All right, any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I haven't re- read these. I know you put them in the packet, but I must admit I've not read them, but is there some ish, some, some areas of this that you see and think that is outdated or that needs to be brought up to standards? Or is there some, something in specific that you have in mind?
Well, just the order of business, public hearings sections, just to kind of update those a little bit and see if, um, if any of the other criteria that's in here is meeting the needs of the Planning Commission. I mean, this was done twelve years ago.
Yes, okay.
So I didn't know if the Planning Commission wanted to look at it during the meetings in the future.
All right, any further questions? Item C.
Um, as you know, Amy, um, is no longer with us, so we're hiring for a planner one and we're looking to conduct, uh, interviews on June sixth. We've had fourteen applicants and it closed on Friday.
Oh.
So that's what we're looking for. That's all for that item.
Awesome.
Item D, uh, Planning Commission interviews, the committee met and interviewed, um, three candidates and the committee's recommendations will be heard on the June nineteenth Board of Commissioners meeting. And then item E is we usually do a little gathering after the final meeting in July, in June for the outgoing commissioners. I want to know if that's what you guys were looking to do again. It'll be June twenty-fifth.
How's that fit for yours and Lori's and Bill's schedule?
Not necessary for me, but.
Getting early to hit a bar.
Well, we usually do it right after the meeting. Depending on what the agenda is, we'll kind of have a better idea in the next few weeks how big the agenda is or how small. But looking just, okay, so we'll keep doing that. Nothing further.
All right. Items from the membership. Anybody got anything? I guess everyone knows that me and Kathy won't be here on June fourth. Anything else? Seeing none or hearing none? Uh, last thing is adjournment. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. We adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.